Let's get started here. We got a, we always start with prayer and pledge. We've got Cherokee Springs Pastor here today, Mr. Taylor Evans. Taylor, you can lead us in water prayer here in a second. Then we'll stand and David Blakey will lead us in the pledge leading us to the flag. So flowers yours, my friend.
Awesome. Thank you. Let's pray together. Father, we love you and we are so thankful for this place that you've given us to call home. For this town, for this county that you blessed us with, for this creation that you have allowed us to steward. And Father, we thank you for these leaders that you have put in place to lead your people, to take care of this space that you've given us. We ask that you be with them, that you pour your Holy Spirit out on them, that you would guide them in every decision that they would make, that you would affirm in them that you have put them in this position for such a time as this. Father, we ask for your continued blessing and the reminder that in this season, we're remembering how much you love us, that you loved us so much that you left heaven to come to be with us and to make a way for us to be restored to you. So regardless of what we face and what we go through, remind us that you are Emmanuel and that you are God with us. Be with us throughout the rest of this meeting, be with the people who are making decisions, and just help us to live lives that make much of your name and who you are. And it's for your glory that we pray in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
All standing. Everybody knows the pledge. Everybody know the pledge? Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Taylor. We call the Russell Springs Rector City Council meeting to order for December fourteenth. I need a roll call, Chris.
Mr. Blakey.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Barnes. Miss Mann.
Here.
Miss Dan. Mr. Hudson.
Here.
First thing on your agenda is acceptance of the minutes. And Chris has sent them out to you. I hope you've had a chance to go over on any discussion on the minutes. Not, I would need a motion to accept the minutes.
Make motion, accept the minutes.
Second.
I'll second.
Lisa, roll call, Chris.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Miss Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Okay, the next thing is acceptance of the cash disbursement of the financial statements. Also, Chris has sent that out to you, so you've had a chance to look over the bills. Any questions about any of the bills? Not, I make a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Got a motion, but either you need a second.
Second.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Miss Mann.
Yes.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is old business. We don't have no old business on the agenda unless somebody's got something they want to bring up. Any council got anything about old business? Pretty good. We jump right into new business. And the first thing is the special recognition of Donnie Wilkerson. We got a proclamation here for Donnie.
Senior Russell Springs proclamation. Whereas is the privilege of Mayor Eddie Thomas and the Russell Springs City Council to recognize and honor individuals who have made significant contributions to our community and have dedicated their lives to the betterment of our society. And whereas Donnie Wilkerson has tirelessly served the community of Russell County as a devoted teacher and as the esteemed former mayor of Jamestown, Kentucky, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to the welfare and prosperity of our two cities and county. And whereas Donnie Wilkerson's dedication to education has inspired countless students, fostering their intellectual growth and equipping them with the knowledge and skills needed to succeed in life. And whereas as the former mayor of Jamestown, Kentucky, Donnie Wilkerson exhibited his leadership, vision, his strong sense of civic duty, guiding our neighbor and community with wisdom and integrity. And whereas Donnie Wilkerson's impact on the lives of those he has touched extends far beyond the classroom and the boundaries of his former mayoral office, leaving an enduring legacy of service and community involvement. Now therefore be proclaimed that Mayor Thomas and the Russell Springs City Council on this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty-three, thus hereby declare Donnie Wilkerson to be an honorary citizen of Russell Springs. We extend our heartfelt gratitude for Mr. Wilkerson's outstanding contribution to education and community leadership. May this proclamation serve as a symbol of our appreciation for his dedication to the betterment of Russell Springs and our neighbor and communities. In which whereof I, Eddie Thomas, Mayor of City of Russell Springs, can hereby fix my signature and the official seal of the city on this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty-three. Signed, Mayor Eddie Thomas, Test, Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk.
Donnie, come on up here. It's an honor, and many of y'all know Donnie, and it's an honor to give this proclamation to him, not only for the city of Russell Springs and me, everybody in this room. Donnie, I believe you've touched some way somehow. We do appreciate you and we just wanted to recognize you and tell you how much you mean to us. We appreciate you.
Mayor, thank you.
And you're always welcome in Russell Springs.
I know that.
And you're always welcome at City Pool.
That's exactly right.
A lot of people don't know this is the assistant pool manager there.
I'm your best customer.
Yeah, we'll see if we can get you a free pass next year.
Mayor, thank you. That's not necessary. The best thing is the honor to being an honorary citizen of Russell Springs. And I like the idea that it's the community of Russell County. We're all one big community and we've made such great strides and I so appreciate that. And thank you for the recognition.
Appreciate it.
There's people in this room that touched me as well.
There are a lot of them here.
I've got students in the room, so.
They're raising their hands, so they won't be proud of it.
Thank you all. Thank you. And I know apparently you've got another special program going here and I'm gonna let you get on to that.
All right, thanks, Donnie.
You guys, thank you all. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna jump in front here because Matty's gotta leave. So Matty, this was from the Christmas. This is the best dress window on Main Street. This is for Prudy. And she gets the trophy. She had the best dress window. And this is the check, so we want to make sure she gets the check too. So congratulations. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So we'll just stay with the Christmas theme. So the next one for the Christmas parade was best classic car. So Bernie, you here? Can you make your way in?
As close as I can get.
Didn't you win this last year?
Yeah, I'm almost embarrassed to say.
Well, you can't win it next year, but we want you to. Turn around here and we present, this is the car. Best antique car he wanted again this year. So here is your check and your trophy and thank you a lot. Appreciate you. Next award is the best youth entry. That's Clear Springs. Who's gonna, is everybody coming?
All right, come on, guys.
Make room for everybody. Hey, that's funny job, dude. Come on in. All right, come on in. Somebody hold your trophy.
Oh, no, no, no.
The check, hey, we'll give the check to the breach guy outside. They're around here. Appreciate y'all. Everybody turn around there and say, geez, we're there. Thank you all. Thank you. Just thank you. Okay, the next is best small float or vehicle. Oakley, Burton. Oh yeah, that's a John Deere truck.
We gotta walk up here.
Now you get the check and the trophy. How's that?
Come here.
That's yours.
That's your trophy. Can you turn around and look this way so they can take pictures? Come here. Look this way now, hold it.
Yes, and thereby that might be the better of things. Thank y'all. Thank us all. Appreciate you all.
All right, we'll show this over this way.
Best large float entry vehicle, the Hickel model. Well, he's gonna get to hold it right here. Y'all get up here behind him and we'll.
She wants to apologize.
You know that. Let her come around front, put her hand on it. And here's the main thing.
That's the driver.
That's it. That's it. West eighty charter guy, best of parade. This is the big winner.
Yeah.
Y'all can stand anywhere you want to. Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yeah, we'll have it again early again. Thank you all.
Ah, thank you.
If you don't do them, there won't be nobody here. Tim, come on up. We got a check for you. This is food for the needy. Fifteen hundred dollar check from the, this is the entries from the parade. And all the money and the proceeds go to y'all. You want to test? This right here, I don't know if you can catch this.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys. I can send you her next month.
Russ County J.C.'s. Is Ricky, do you get?
No, they won't let me.
Yeah, we need Ricky Barnes up here.
Hey, there won't be no more pictures to it because I had them right.
Why do you think I put a hat on?
Get in there in the pedals. Let's let y'all know this was three thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. And that's what was raised from the five K of the proceeds, so.
That'll go a long way.
Yeah, for toys, for the toys for Todd. Appreciate you guys.
Appreciate you all.
I believe this is Thanksgiving. Don't you chief instead of Christmas? You can ask out there, Zach.
It's Hootie.
Ask Hootie if Greg's out there.
He's out here.
There he is.
There you go, sir.
See, he was a little late. You didn't get a seat. Sit down there. The next thing on the agenda is a sweeper truck purchase. And Chris has got a resolution to read for it.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. Authorization for purchase of sweeper truck, change to number one. Whereas the City of Russell Springs recognizes the need for maintaining clean and safe streets for its residents and visitors. Whereas after careful evaluation, the city has identified a suitable vehicle meeting its streets cleaning requirements. Be it resolved that the City of Russell Springs is hereby authorized to purchase one used twenty oh three Tomco model four three five sweeper truck. Be it further resolved that the mayor of Russell Springs is authorized and directed to sign any and all documents necessary to complete purchase of the eight aforementioned sweeper truck. Be it also resolved that the city clerk's office is authorized to issue a check in a total amount of forty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of the said sweeper truck. Be it finally resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage, affirming the city's commitment to maintain a clean and welcoming environment for all. Adopted this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty-three by the City of Russell Springs. Signed, Eddie Thomas, Mayor, Test, Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk.
All right, we got, we got a couple people here from the city who want to talk about it. And then Greg, Wayne, for any questions y'all might have. So Daniel, Scotty, you wanna?
We go ahead. Hello, my name is Daniel Buster. I work for the City of Russell Springs. Over the last probably, I guess probably month, we've been looking at sweeper trucks. And especially with this fall and after the Christmas parade, it's come to light that it's definitely need. Not just with Main Street, but our side streets can be utilized at the park as well. When we go out and we start mowing right away, sometimes that gets kicked up onto the roadway. And we don't have a good solution to go out and get that street cleaned off other than, you know, leaf blowers and brooms, which can be a safety hazard because we're standing out in the middle of the road trying to get those cleaned off. They brought it in. We took a look at it. For an older model, this thing is really clean. It's been really taken care of. The operation is pretty simple. It's just, it seems like a really good purchase for the city. And let's be honest about it, for our community as a whole, for the county. Because what we do in the city represents our county. So that's all I have. If anybody's got any questions. Thank you.
I think Timmy and David rode in it maybe. At least you've seen it. Ricky's seen it.
Yeah, I thought he'd done a real job. We went down to the Main Street. He swept up next to the curb. Of course, some of that stuff been, it may have been laying there for who knows how long. And I'm sure you'd have to go back over it a couple times on that tough stuff. But yeah, I liked it.
And Hootie, how long has it been out of operation?
It's been over a year, Mayor.
And we never had no questions when we had that other one. You used it pretty regular, didn't you?
Yeah, about every two weeks.
So. And Greg's here. You got any questions to ask? Sorry I didn't introduce you, but I couldn't get to you.
That's all right. You have plenty of things to do. That was more important.
Yeah. This is the company that we're gonna purchase it from if we desire to purchase it. And he brought it up here and left it and let us use it. Like I said, some of these come up and rode in it. Seen how it operates.
I think it's a good deal. I'm ready to vote.
I agree.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, I need a motion to purchase it.
Make a motion to purchase.
Motion, but David need a second.
I'll say.
Second, but Ricky need a roll call, both Chris.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Miss Mann.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, council. Thank you, Greg, for coming up.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
You're welcome. Appreciate you.
And you did throw in a free thing, brushes, didn't you?
I got my truck if you want it.
You'll have to see, you'll have to see Scotty or Daniel for that.
Sure.
But then the next thing is the resolution twenty twenty-three. And I guess that's sixteen, please. Twenty twenty-three sixteen, it's street department building construction. You've got a resolution on here?
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen. Authorization for streets department building construction. Whereas the City of Russell Springs seeks to improve its infrastructure and facilities to better serve the community. And whereas the American Relief Plan Act funds, or known as ARPA, have been allocated to assist in such developmental projects. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Russell Springs as follows, section one, project authorization. The City Council hereby authorized the construction of a new streets department building. The project consists of a forty by seventy metal covered and bubble wrapped insulated pole building equipped with five garage doors and openers, two entrance doors, concrete floor drains and water hydrants. Section two, budget and funding. The approximate cost of this project is set at seventy-five thousand dollars. This project shall be funded entirely through the American Relief Plan Acts Fund. Section three, mayor role authorization. The mayor of Russell Springs is hereby authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to complete the construction project, ensuring compliance with the relevant laws and regulations. Section four, fund reallocation. Any funds remaining from this project shall be reallocated along with the rest of the remaining ARPA funds. These funds shall be transferred to the general fund of the City of Russell Springs for general maintenance purposes. Section five, effective date. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. Adopted this fourteenth day of December twenty twenty-three by the City Council of the City of Russell Springs, Kentucky. Signed, Mayor Eddie Thomas, Test, Christopher Ramsey, City Clerk.
So you've got a list of it here in your packet. Timmy, we did change that from using number two lumber on the outside to one.
Metal.
Yeah, metal.
Yeah.
And Tommy had, went back through it and it come out with using one metal. It was seventy-two thousand. Using number two metal was seventy thousand. So we just went ahead and if the council elects to do this now, we'll go ahead and do the number one metal on the outside.
I think being you doing the number one metal, I'll be all for it. And that ain't a bad price on a building that size. It don't sing with me like. Of course, I know. We're not finishing the inside out. That helps a lot. But still, we need it, I think.
Any other council got any question on it?
Where's it gonna be, where's it gonna be built? Where's it gonna be built?
Over at the park.
Or may I have to park?
To the right of the basketball, blacktop where the basketball court used to be. To the right of it, right there on that flat land.
You going blacktop it or concrete floor?
Concrete floor. With grains in it. It's got down here, concrete.
You're gonna miss that in here.
Yeah, with grains in it. And that five garage doors.
Well, being as we got the funds to buy it, I think we'll just go ahead and do it.
Need a motion on it?
I'll make a motion. We build the building. What you call it?
Street department building?
Street department building.
Got a motion by Timmy. He need a second.
I'll second.
Second. And Miss Lisa, roll call, Chris.
Miss Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. I know Daniel and Scotty appreciate that. The next thing on the agenda is the police department report. Do we give the report first there, chief?
For the month of November, we had total of five DUIs, eleven warrants served, ninety-one traffic stops, fifty-eight traffic charges, eleven of those were speeding. We investigated twenty-four traffic accidents and opened seven cases. Had a total of eighteen arrests and three hundred and ninety-two calls for service. And there were fifty-three ABC inspections.
Back there, any questions for the chief? I think the chief has an award. He wants to.
This was given to one of our officers.
Couple weeks ago.
Yes, sir.
He presented this award in Lexington. In Lexington, this is a governor's award for impaired driving enforcement. So Mason won this for our department with having the most DUIs. So proud of him for that.
Proud of you, young man. Appreciate you. Chief said I had to get everybody out of here before he was presenting that to him. Next thing is the economic development report. Jeremy?
From the economic stance, we actually had two RFIs this past month. One of them was a diner that had burned in Burnside. Mayor and I turned him around for a couple of days trying to locate him. One of them was the, I'm sure everybody's heard the rumor of the tractor supply. That's a, that's not contractual as of this afternoon at four o'clock. Bids have been taken for an upgrade of buildings, but today it's contractual at this point in time. I can't do that. We've worked on it for several months now, but we'll just see where it goes day by day.
Anybody got any questions for Jeremy?
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
If not, has the council got anything they want to bring, bring up? Before I get the mayor's report, it's gonna be short. First thing on the mayor's report is the manhole project that you've heard about down at Jamestown. And got a statement here from MCSP out of Cincinnati, Ohio. They have cleared the interiors of twenty-nine manholes and lift stations using the pressure washer. Then they applied cement coating with a thickness ranging from a half inch to two inches based on the level of degradation of the existing concrete. Once the cement sets, they've added a layer of Ravon epoxy on it of a hundred and twenty-five millimeters thick. The project and concrete for the damage is H two S gas. The work is supposed to be completed tomorrow afternoon. If everything goes away, then when we got this statement yesterday, so we'll see. But Chris is throwing something up here to show you kind of what they done. That's what it looked like. See how it was all, Timmy, can you see it?
Yeah.
See how it's all deteriorated? And the top of it, how worn it was? And then. They went in and that's after they cleaned it and put the concrete on it, reconcreted it all. And then they went in and that's after they put the epoxy on it. So it's gonna make a difference in our eye and eye for sure. We're almost sure, Alan talked about how bad they were. He said we had a lot of water leaking in about every one of them. So he said he feels like this will really help the eye and eye. So that's where we are on that right now. We'll know more about it when they get done. And it should be, should be finished this week. And then we'll get a rain or two and then we'll know a little bit more about it after we get the rain. The next thing is the Christmas lights are still open till the twenty-eighth. Santa will be there the next two Saturday nights, so don't forget that. Put that on y'all's media now. Santa will be there the next two Saturday nights. So don't forget to put that on the website of your house. And theirs is Sunday through Thursday, five to eight, Friday and Saturday, five to ten. So we've had five thousand three hundred and twenty-one cars go through. Last year, we was right at five thousand and something. So we thought maybe we might get six thousand this year. But Jeremy seems to think we're gonna get closer to seven. So you times seven, times two, that's fourteen thousand people. Times four, we've had, I know Spark took two vans through, you know. So we're probably looking at Ford's all over with twenty-eight, thirty thousand people going through and looking their lights. So that's huge for this community and that's free. Don't forget to get that down too. That's free. Burnside is, I think, thirty-five this year, no, twenty-five. And E-Town is thirty-five. So just remember what they're charging and where not, we're giving it back to our community. Council voted to get the lights last year. That's what they wanted. And I think they made. Council voted to get the lights last year and that's what they wanted and I think they made a great call. And the city hall will be closed the following dates, Monday, December twenty-fifth, Tuesday, December twenty-sixth for Christmas, and Friday, December the twenty-ninth and Monday, January the first for the New Year's. So we're gonna be closed there at the end of the year, so if you ain't got your water bill paid, you've only got about four days there to get it paid before it'll be late, so. With that, that's all I've got. I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Got a motion, but David need a second?
I'll say.
Any second. All in favors, they are?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.